Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lincolnfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins. Councilmember Weasley.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by a consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. The first order of business this evening is the Americans with Disability Act or ADA requirements for businesses.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council.
Good evening.
This is a kind of a leftover from a couple of weeks ago when we ran it a little bit long. We wanted to go in, as you know, we've had some conversation, actually, because Dave is here, that some questions on some ADA issues possibly around the city. So what this is, is just basically is to gain a better understanding of the law for you guys, when it's required, why it's required, and how we, the City of Kingman, apply that law. So ADA for businesses. So the American Disabilities Act became law in 1990, basically granting civil rights to all individuals and guaranteeing people with disabilities the same rights as people without disabilities. Mandated by the federal government, but enforced by local jurisdictions. Another unfunded mandate, if I will. So the ADA requirements for us basically are two different applications that we look at during the course of what we do for the City of Kingman. The first application is new businesses and public facilities, and existing businesses, buildings, and buildings built prior to the ADA Act. New buildings is relatively easy. They've all, all new buildings must meet all the ADA standards. And that includes accesses, door accesses, parking accesses, areas into buildings, signage, ramps, doorways, and fire alarms, everything, drinking fountains, everything to do with that. So that's kind of a, that's kind of a no-brainer for that. Where it gets a little more complicated is existing buildings. The Title III specifically states that for public accommodations, discrimination includes failure to remove architectural barriers in existing facilities. Unless it can be shown that removing a barrier is not readily achievable or accommodations cannot be provided through other means. So as far as a definition, what ADA defines the readily achievable as easily accomplished and able to carry it out without much difficulty or expense to the building owner or to the store owner. Statutory definition also provides factors to be considered in determining whether barrier removal is readily achievable and recognizes that may be achievable for one business, might not be achievable for another business. The variables that goes into this is the nature of the cost of the required barrier remover, barrier removal. And that could be such as ramps. They have a step at their door. What a ramp costs if they don't have room for a strict ADA ramp. If somewhere they meet in the middle to get the jest of it to help that out. And it goes into a lot of it is the cost. And most of these things that we're talking about tonight on historic buildings would be like downtown and old buildings. The financial resource also is a variable. Can the people afford it? That's part of that as well. The number of people employed by the facility. And one thing that to keep in mind that, that it's not just the employer, the people that come in to shop at the store. It's also the employees that they have to do this with. And it also takes in a variable of the effect on facilities, expenses, and resources. The impact on the operation of the facility, overall finances. So not just the cost of that, but what's the finances overall of the facility? And the type, number type and location of its facility. How many facilities do they have? Is it a chain? Now, one thing to keep in mind that if taken to court over these ADA things, those people have to prove in court that these things are not achievable for them. So it's not just a, hey, I've only got $80 to spend on this. I can't do that. If taken to task, they have to prove that to the court. So existing buildings priorities. So what they do is they set a priority for an existing building. When they make ADA changes, accommodations, regulations include four different priorities to be considered when taking steps to meet the barrier removal. Number one priority is access. Access to the places, the public accommodation, public sidewalks, parking, again, entrance ramps, doors into, into facilities. That's the number one priority. So if you were, if you had a certain amount of money to make your place ADA accessible, then you would start with these priorities with number one through four. The number two priority is making goods and services available to the public by changing the layout, display racks. I happen to have had a daughter in a wheelchair for her whole life. So I understand what these are. Clothes racks, while it was a game when she was a kid, the clothes racks being so close so we couldn't find her. It's very much a challenge when, when, you know, people become adults and try to get around and do the shopping. So that's something that we'll take a look at. And then braille or raised character signage. The third priority is making public restrooms accessible. Now, the key to that is saying public restrooms. And I'll get about a little bit into that a little bit here shortly. And any other measures necessary to make a place public accommodation accessible. So broken down just a little bit, building entrances. So we, we have had over the past, people, folks that have been on the council for a while, with the downtown especially, where we've got steps. And we've tried to meet in the middle with that. It's not only they have no room for those ramps, but it's also trying to make that as accessible as possible with reality. I think that going into that, there's no question that we want 100% compliance of the ADA so all people with ADA requirements can shop and do everything else. There, there is a kind of a meet in the middle kind of thing. And again, these are, these are court ordered. These are, are things that are fought in court often. Again, we go back to secondary exits if they're required. Buildings downtown, for the most part, they're small buildings. They don't have to have second exits. There are stores generally not over 50 occupants in there. Extremely small storefronts that don't have room for a large ramp. And that's what I was talking about, that there's some accommodations that we've been able to make with store owners. And the city has participated as well to try to bring ramps up a little bit wider into the sidewalk to try to help into those, those buildings. But at the end of the day, it's the store owner or the building owner's responsibility to do that. Accessible bathrooms. So one of the things that we really, we fight downtown is accessible bathrooms. Now, when we talk about accessible bathrooms, we also word that or put that together with required bathrooms. There, not every facility is required a public bathroom. So some of the downtown, a public bathroom that, if it's a public bathroom for public, small, and I'm thinking small storefronts, and this is the issue where we run into it. If they're for the public, they have to be required to be ADA accessible. Something we discussed years ago when we started having some issues is having a downtown public ADA restrooms for the public. That takes care of a whole bunch of issues with a lot of our existing buildings to do that. Now, this goes back into the same situation that we run into. Every time we propose or we try to come up with another fix is somebody's got to pay to build that building. So, so, so the public bathroom, so, so that is the key to it. Making a public bathroom in some of these small places is not feasible financially. It's not feasible to be for room, some of these smaller areas, and to do that. Again, it's, public bathrooms have to be ADA. And then extremely small areas. So entrance doors. So this is something, this is how this came about. And Mr. McCabe was in here, and Mr. McCabe has been in my office a couple of times. Very knowledgeable man on this. And, and we've had some great conversations. We, we agree to disagree on one or two things, but we are, we remain friends. And so he's actually given you guys some, some stuff tonight kind of to take a look at. And if there's any other questions that come about from that later on, just let me know. The entrance doors, they, they are tested for the mechanisms to be able to open the doors. And this was, and you'll see on some of the stuff that Mr. McCabe has given you, some of the point of contentions, how heavy some of the doors are. The unlocking mechanisms and the pressure required to open and close the door. In, in the code, and we go by the International Building Code, it specifically says that there are some, and as Kingman being one of them, people will turn them down just a little tighter to keep the doors closed because of the wind. And it specifically says because of wind people. Now, what is that meet in the middle part? And that's something that Mr. McCabe and I have discussed. The interpretation of the code, so as far as opening, there's a certain poundage that it takes to open the door. And so by code, the interpretation of our IBC code is that it's in three different sections. So the unlocking of the mechanism, the getting the door started, poundage, and then continuing the door. In this case, the way that I interpret the code and the way that we do is 15 pounds of pressure to initiate it, 30 pounds to get it started to a certain point, and then 15 pounds to continue. The application of ADA rules and codes require that us, the City of Kingman and building and life safety specifically, are the authorities having jurisdictions. It allows us, requires us to do the interpretation of, of the code using our experience and written code. And basically to try to find the most right requirement for, for the city and the customer. It's very difficult to go through. And I might add, one of the, one of the things that some of this, we, once we give a C of O to a building, the building department part is not generally back into a building unless they change occupancy classification. We are back in as fire inspectors yearly or semi-annually. So one of the things that we're, we've done that we haven't in the past is, is go through and check that just a little bit closer, some of the, the ADA requirements. The signage and some of the things that are, that is in your books and parking signs, parking, and they're legal, not legal. Those kind of things are left up to either the city, if it's our property, or private individuals, if it's a, if it's a, like the, the plaza or something. So that's left up to those. So that's kind of a little bit, that's kind of real quick of a very complicated process and code. Like I say, if you have any questions of any of the stuff that Mr. McCabe has sent you, I'm sure he'll happily answer that. And I would certainly weigh in. Do you have any, is there any questions?
Any questions for Chief Eden?
Just, just one question for Manager Fogg. Appreciate the good presentation. And on the restrooms, the ADA restrooms downtown, I know that the city has a grants writer, right? Do we have a grants writer?
Correct, yes.
Isn't that something where they could, they could really start to try to seek some grant funding to get that project completed?
Yeah, I've not heard that about that project. So I'll have to do a little bit of research and see kind of what the proposal or what the thought was. But yeah, if there's, if there's something there, we definitely could reach out.
Yeah, if you could, if you could just make one centralized ADA restroom facility, that would alleviate that requirement from every business down there.
Right, yeah, absolutely. It's a good suggestion.
Do you have anything else, please?
Okay, point of clarification on what was just mentioned. It would make it wonderful for everyone walking around downtown, but the, the businesses downtown could still only offer, I see signs that say, these are not public restrooms, you know, customers only. They would still have to do that if they didn't have.
Right, and you will find that the places that offer public restrooms are restaurants and bars and things. I mean, there's, there's a lot of people that still offer public restrooms that are ADA or are required to have ADA. And it just goes back, and when I think, I want to go, go back and spend several years when we were discussing this project. And it was just simply, how can we help maintain the ADA and how, and how can we help do that? Because we, we can go through and, and prove that these, it costs too much for these places to do and this kind of thing, but it still doesn't fix the issue of people with disabilities needing restrooms.
Right.
And that was the thought process behind it. I don't even think we got as far as a location, but something local.
But what would be accomplished is that the business owner could refer them to the public restroom. That would be a good thing.
And like I say, it's not that the business owners don't want to, to give those, those ADA access. They, many times, they just, they can't for one reason or another.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Chief Eden. Okay, the next order of business is downtown Wi-Fi. Mr. Kloss.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a brief presentation I'll go through. And hopefully enlighten you a little bit about what's happened in the past about Wi-Fi in downtown Kingman. The idea was presented to TDC in November of 2016. There was a quote in your packet dated 2/28/17 from Frontier. It was to cover Beale Street shops between Third and Fifth Street and the two downtown parks. And I don't know if you've seen that, but I put the quotes with the locations here. So there's a lot of information on this one slide. I may have been a little generous with their coverage area, but it's basically that area right there. And you can see the monthly charges. There are no installation costs. They were rolled into the monthly charge on their quote. If you look at that quote, there's not a lot of technical information. The other part was, it's basically that sock you see right there, that area of where the parks are, was what was going to be covered in that second quote. And you can see the prices for those too. Again, depending on, the first one was depending on speed and duration of the term. These are just on the duration of the charge. So to get a little more information together, I looked for a city that was similar in size to us that did something pretty much like what we're looking to do. So I found the City of McDonough, Georgia. 27,000 people, close to Atlanta. Their phase one was their town square and four small parks. They wanted to put Wi-Fi in them. They got a company from Atlanta to design it and install it. And they funded it with local sales tax, special funding option they have with their sales tax. That phase cost $140,000. And they pay roughly $2,000 a month service fees on that. So hopefully that's a good starting point to see what's going on. I put some backup information in active. Mr. Sykes from McDonough actually did kind of a white paper in here on this project. You can read through the specifics. So that's really all I have to show you. I was assuming there'd be some discussion.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. When I asked for this item to be put onto a work session, I kind of, I'm going to go kind of a completely different way. The solution that I would really want to explore is not a city-driven solution. In the research that I've done, there's, there are public-private partnerships out there. And I'd really would be curious for the city to issue a request for proposals for Wi-Fi downtown. In other instances, you'll see where a city offers up their light, their light poles, traffic lights, street lights for the private company to put the equipment on. It can be phased as it needs to be. And then it's paid for either by advertising from private businesses or if you have a bunch of tourists. I mean, if we have 160,000 tourists that are coming through the visitor center every year, just like if you go, you know, traveling and you go to a hotel and sometimes if you want better service, you have to pay a little nominal, nominal fee to jump onto their Wi-Fi.
Sure.
And that's how this, the coverage would be paid for. And it wouldn't be a cost to the city. I've talked to a couple of firms just kind of picking their brain about their experience, about what they would do. One's called Open Broadband, and then there's another one. They're in Tennessee, and there's another one that would be interested in, in possibly submitting a proposal to an RFP for downtown Wi-Fi. That would be, you know, privately implemented and, and paid for by advertising or user fees or something like that. And all the city would need to do is let them put their hardware on our light poles or.
Right, offer up our vertical assets for them to use.
Right, that's kind of what I was, what I was thinking, that there's no harm. I mean, there's no cost issue in RFP really, so we could do a test of the market.
Yeah, and if that's, that is definitely, Joe and I have had a little bit of a conversation with regards to, we know that those models are out there. Not knowing exactly the direction, we wanted to make sure that the council kind of understood. I know that this had been a conversation in the past. And I wouldn't say that the conversation went as, as well as we, we would, we would have thought or that this process for the city to do was, was really not very cost-effective for being able, what seems to be, should be a simple process, you know? When you walk into this building, there's free Wi-Fi, right? Shouldn't that just be, you know, how do you create that umbrella? And it's, you know, reading through the white paper and understanding, starting to understand that it's, it's, it's a little bit more complicated. Yeah, I think letting the private sector, if, if there's models out there that we could attract to, to our area, we definitely would be happy to pursue that as well. Just again, not exactly sure where we wanted to start, but I thought, well, we probably should start at where, what it would, what it would cost us as a community to provide that. Obviously, we, you know, my, our hope is that it wouldn't, that it would be kind of a free Wi-Fi system.
Right.
I mean, that, that's what we would, we would hope for because that's kind of the, the draw for people to come to the downtown is that they would have that access that they, they would have to pay for or that they might not even have. And so, you know, that, that was kind of the driving factor behind where, where we were. Unfortunately, I think it is, at least from the city's standpoint, fairly cost prohibitive to enter the, enter that. But putting an RFP together to see if there is interest in that, it doesn't, it's a little bit of time.
I think those numbers were probably from a long time ago. Everybody's familiar with where the city is now.
Right.
Our hands are tied in a lot of different ways. So we really need to, to try to be entrepreneurial and do some innovative things to keep moving forward with some of these projects. I know there's another work session coming up on Parklets downtown.
Yep.
And, and, you know, that would give some seating, some more public seating outside so people could work or do whatever they do with the Wi-Fi. There's also, I think, an opportunity for tourism. You know, you, you go to a hotel and you have to put in your email address. You can start tracking where people are coming from and you can target your advertising, your marketing.
Right, yep.
So I think that it's something to explore.
Yep, absolutely.
I just wanted to, to add on to that. We haven't talked about this in a while. But after the, after the last discussion, I met with a rep. So this has been probably two years now. But there's even an opportunity where your city can make some money off of allowing them to put their, their hardware on your light poles and things like that. And then I agree with Councilman Lincolnfelter, this is a, a good opportunity for the city's tourism as well as direct marketing for our local businesses. And so in the end, it may not cost us anything, but the city could also find some revenue from it. And I, and I won't swear to it, but I think that there's even an opportunity to improve Wi-Fi for businesses in that area as well. They'll get a better signal, so it's, it's a bonus to bring in.
So the model that you're talking about, Counselor, is when you have a Wi-Fi, when you have a company that comes into town that wants to offer Wi-Fi to businesses and homes, they're usually looking for that. They, they need to be on that vertical infrastructure that Joe had mentioned. And as part of those, those folks coming to town, usually the agreement works out where you're, if you have an area that you want to try to get them free Wi-Fi, the city will usually give up or discount what they're charging. They do end up making some money on letting people on, you know, their vertical infrastructure. But they'll offer for, you know, a couple of blocks in your downtown or at a park or a couple of parks. They'll give you that as a, I guess, as a discount kind of negotiation. So yeah, we're really familiar with that. I've watched Wi-Fi systems go into communities, and that's been the offer. A little bit different model than what Vice Mayor is talking about, where we're, where we're inviting them to town to do, to provide this service. But yeah, if anybody came to town looking to be on, on our infrastructure, that would definitely be a great way. Because we would look to make some money on it and we would look to get some benefit from it, AKA part, you know, Wi-Fi service in parks and Wi-Fi specifically on Beale Street or in our downtown to support tourism. But as well as anybody coming down. Like I said, what we're trying to do is give people a reason to come downtown. And that is, how do we get you some free Wi-Fi? So that, you know, if you, if you bring your kids with you shopping, they can watch, you know, they can watch YouTube while you do your shopping, right?
They can play Minecraft.
Right, or whatever it is, so, yeah, absolutely. But yeah, we, we definitely can take a look at the RFP. If someone comes to town wanting to do a Wi-Fi system, we would definitely keep that as, as definitely an option to make money and to see what else we could get out of it. And even if you broke even and were able to supply free Wi-Fi in all your public spaces, I mean, that may be, that may be the win you were looking for, so.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
So it sounds like both of these first two items are elements that need to be integrated into the downtown master plan. And, but moving forward with those that we can, especially the Wi-Fi. But those could be integrated as we move forward with the plan. Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, third item is front yard parking policy.
Is it at the bottom on the right? Bottom, right. Right by the 70 percent. Ah, got it. There we go. All right, not as exciting as your last subject. The front yard parking, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. One of the things you asked us to do was to have the planning and zoning put together a little program to talk about where we are with current regulations. I want to preface, this is kind of my way out of it anyway, but the, is remember that next week we are undertaking, we have already started the process on the update of your regulations and planning and zoning regs. And as hard as the staff has worked on this, especially I'd like to give Rich credit for this, but Sylvia's been shepherding that process. She will make sure we do not leave any stone unturned. And this will be one of the stones, okay? Okay, single family. And what I'm going to do is kind of just point you towards the zoning ordinances. And because basically this will be kind of where it all stands today. So, single-family residence is required to provide parking for a minimum of two vehicles. And this is under the zoning ordinance of 22.330. Driveways are required to be paved with concrete, asphalt, sealed aggregate pavement, or other surfaces approved by the city engineer. And again, this is under Kingman zoning ordinance 22.700. Minimum residential driveway width is 12 feet. And later on in the presentation. Minimum residential driveway width is 12 feet and later on in the presentation, I'll have an illustration, it will actually show the driveway and stuff like that. There is no specific limit to the number of operable vehicles or other non-commercial vehicles that may be parked on a residential property, including within the front yard. There is no requirement that such vehicles be located on a paved surface or driveway when located in front yards, except as noted in, again, in the following slides. So, we'll just kind of move forward on that. Again, RVs, boats, trailers, truck campers, camping trailers, utility trailers, and other similar vehicles are required to be parked and stored on paved driveways and paved parking areas if located in the front yard beyond the facade of the house. And again, this is a zoning ordinance. No portion of any such vehicle shall be extended into a block, into or block any portion of the public sidewalk or street, so you can't let that boat or trailer stick out into the sidewalk or the street area. Not more than two such vehicles may be stored for each 20,000 square feet of lot area, provided that no more than four such vehicles are stored in any residential lot. Again, this is under another zoning ordinance. Stored or such vehicles is not permitted on a residential lot without a residential structure. Okay, so that eliminates that, just, I'm going to put it on that vacant lot type situation. Okay, this slide was really kind of designed to show you, the green represents where they can be stored. And so, you can see the two different yards here and where it can, you can store the vehicles. Notice it out on there on the left, that 72-hour maximum street parking too. So, you know, we do have some restrictions that, you know, can help protect us on that. But again, the green area was designed to show you where they would be stored. Except for temporary loading and unloading of household goods or making service calls, the following commercial vehicles cannot be parked or stored on streets or on properties in residential zoning districts. Vehicles having gross vehicle weight in excess of 16,000 pounds, and that's a Kingman municipal code, okay? And then, commercial registered vehicles with a chassis rated for more than five tons, and that is also a Kingman municipal code. Additionally, commercial vehicles, except tow trucks, with a chassis rated more than 3.5 tons or greater, or a vehicle length greater than 22 feet are not permitted within front or front side yards in residential areas. Again, a municipal code, not a zoning code. Okay, now we get down to abandoned or junk vehicles, as defined in the Kingman municipal code, shall be stored behind a fence or in a structure so that they are not visible from beyond the lot boundaries. Again, a municipal code. A maximum of three such vehicles are permitted to be stored. This means that inoperable vehicles cannot be stored in a front yard. The research that was done behind this is the planning staff researched some parking regulations in four Arizona cities with regard to front yard parking requirements in residential areas. Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, Tempe, Mesa, all require parking in the front yards to be on improved dustless surfaces, okay? All cities except Fountain Hills allow gravel three inches deep and enclosed by a border so that it does not move as an acceptable surface for the parking area. This is not an approved parking surface in the city of Kingman, except for overflow parking at commercial businesses. Tempe and Scottsdale restrict the amount of front yard that may be used for parking to 35% of the total front yard area. Parking on grass or compacted dirt is not allowed in all the cities. So, that kind of gives you just an overview and so, again, I want to preface with a comment that this is one of the things that we certainly will be looking at as we move forward in our regulations. So, this, again, tonight designed to just give you an information piece on where we are today. I'll answer any questions and I also have the back here to back me up, I hope.
What, any comments, questions? Well, we look forward to having the entire zoning regulations looked at and how old are they?
Forty-seven years.
Forty-seven years, because I think some of these are areas that we do need to have regulation.
I think the other thing, Mayor, that, you know, the world's changed quite a bit and that, I think, as we look forward, you know, when we start to think about subdivisions and stuff in the future, you know, the boys and their toys have changed and so, where people didn't used to have maybe just a boat and it would be a small one at that, you know, now it's the boat, it's the trailer, it's the razors and everything else that go along with it. So, that's really one of the good things in looking forward at the new code is to say, all right, how do we embrace, you know, what is today and, I mean, what's going to be coming to on that. Thank you.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Final issue for our work session is targeted code enforcement for city entrances. Good evening.
Maybe it's me.
No, Sylvia's coming up.
Okay, what I'd discuss with you today is targeted enforcement and/or corridors. I'm David Wright with the Kingman Police Department. I oversee our code enforcement division and/or what it should be called is neighborhood services, because that's truly what we do. Enforcement of codes and ordinances are currently in process and have always been ongoing with not only our division but other divisions citywide. The violations that we want to address are violations affecting quality of life. A working group comprised of various city divisions identified several areas to best serve the community. One of those, which is a service request, that's going to be rolled out July 8th. In a pack in front of you, I've provided some of the key areas that we worked in the last year to include this year. With that is a highlight of the service request. In that service request, each division has a specific area that is key to their division, whether it be KFD, Kingman Police Department, and/or planning and zoning engineering. We identified that as a color chart as well to further define that in not only each division but also to dispatch, to make sure that that is routed to the proper division versus duplicating efforts, because oftentimes it fell on our plate or in my office when in actuality, it was either multi-divisional and/or a singular event to investigate and take care of. Dollar General, Dollar General has been an ongoing topic. We started that case actually in June of 2008. Council had that on an agenda shortly thereafter, but prior to it being on a council agenda, it was actually in neighborhood services' hands and we were dealing with that. We ultimately notified Dollar General corporate office, who is charged with the property maintenance of all Dollar Generals, whether it be local or otherwise. You have a copy of that email as well sent. That email was rather pointed in nature and relatively, abated relatively quickly. This year, we ultimately had that same issue that came about. Again, notified corporate offices and they, again, abated it. Could it look a little better for the area and the size of the business? Yes, but ultimately, it currently meets the requirements set forth by current codes and/or rules and regulations. There was a tire shop located at 1302 Westfield, the entrance in town. It's the first thing that somebody sees coming into our area that had tires located up front on different things. While we were there taking photographs and writing down phone numbers for points of contact, there was at least two to three different cars that pulled in there, thinking that they were still conducting business because it appeared that they were still in business. We ultimately had that abated and cleaned up. That case started on April 23rd and we ended that on April 30th of this year. So, the code enforcement division strives in voluntary compliance. It is our goal to have 80% compliance, but within that division, it's our goal to have 100% compliance. We don't want to charge necessarily anybody, but the next case that we're going to talk about, which is Bob Owens' property, this is a multi-divisional issue. It first started with fire and then from there we were notified and then planning and zoning jumped on board because it's truly a multi-issue problem and it needs to be attacked on different levels. We later met with the property owners, both on neighboring properties that are affected by it, as well as the property owner and/or tenants on the property. We are trying to attack every area that we can as far as notifications to gain compliance. One of those is we notified our finance division and asked if they were current on taxes. That information is protected. We don't get any feedback for that, but that's one avenue to look at, whether they are current on their business license. Can we suspend a business license? Can we have the finance division look at tax histories to go after them another direction to make sure that they are current? And then lastly, as of about a week or two ago, ADEQ is notified to step in to, because some of the areas of concern, spilled oil and such, that extends beyond the property boundaries and some of the junk and debris that were in the wash area. This case was started on May 1st. It's still ongoing, but if you look at the picture of what it is today in that photograph in front of you, it is, there's marked improvements. That's a sizable area and it's ongoing, so they've been given an extension for that property. However, we are also poised to submit charges or criminal charges if they do not come in And then lastly, the Bashes property. One morning when I was coming into work, it was around the time of the fun run and I look next to Bashes and Kmart and see the overgrowth of weeds and what a blight it was. So, our division had started making contact with ADOT and at the same time, we had a meeting with the streets department and their officials and we talked about what our plans were. And at that point in time, we were stopped on moving forward that because this senior leader group had an upcoming project in that same exact area. So, as you see in the photograph, they did a great job, and some of you were present, in cleaning that area up, so kudos to you. Is there any questions at all? And you can see that we are trying to work together as a team to accomplish anything that we need to within the city.
Thank you, Officer. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
On these sites where you're repeatedly having to go in and ask them, you know, once you hear whatever to clean up again, is there something that you can do to encourage them to not be a repeat offender or is, how do you handle this?
I think that takes community buy-in. Sometimes we gain that and sometimes we don't. Sometimes it's just a social issue, that person just lives that way, so they fall in and out of compliance. We deal with things on a 30-day compliance standpoint. So, let's say July 1st, we start a case, by the 31st of July, they should be in compliance. As of August 1st, we should be submitted for charges. There's a case-by-case basis in whether we do that. Bob Owens' property is one of those because of the size and the complexity of what they need to clear off, it's going to take some time. And do we as a city want to come in and abate that and ultimately absorb that cost to ultimately get it back at some point in time in the future? So, that's where that voluntary compliance really, really comes in to play with that. As far as, we hope everybody would just be mindful and courteous and vigilant in their efforts from the time that that case starts until they no longer own that property, but it's unfortunately, that's not the case. And we have professional conversations with people and we also have pointed conversations with people that own problems, properties that fall in and out of compliance. It just depends upon the individual.
What I was really thinking about are these properties that are owned by corporations that are out of town and I can think of more than just the Dollar General where they get dirty and then it looks like somebody's made some phone calls and then all of a sudden it'll be cleaned up and then a few months later, they're back to where they were and that seems like a lot of busy work for the city. They don't want to take care of their property and now you've got to nag them to stay on top of it. We should almost have some kind of policy in place where if you're a repeat offender, we don't have to go through this process with you, you'll just be fined or whatever, especially if you're an out-of-state owner and you're just not taking good care of it.
Right. And we're working on a process to quickly abate, you know, those issues. I know that the party department is working on a streamlined weed abatement program. After seven days, for us, it was 30 days and hopefully, you know, that moves forward so we have something that we can hold on to and at the end of the day, clear it rather quickly. As far as corporations, it ultimately falls on the management locally, at the local level more so than the corporation. Dollar General in specific, their corporation is in charge with all property maintenance the way that it was explained to me, but ultimately, we were looking at charging the manager criminally for that violation. So, that ultimately got that, you know, moving along rather quickly when they learned that we were going after, you know, a manager. I don't know if one of the managers is still employed by that company based upon the condition, but we've had contact with their manager, so I don't know if it's a revolving door in that aspect.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Has there been thought to escalating charges, not just repeating the charge but or making the process more quick, but actually escalating the penalties?
Well, some of the things that we've spoke of is suspending their business license. That's the easiest way to get somebody to come in compliance. We at the Kingman Police Department oversee the 30-day tow program and such and in the past, we have suspended somebody's right to operate under their tow license for the city of Kingman for responding to toes. If we were to do something like that, maybe that would get quicker resolution to problem areas and then from there go after them criminally, because if they're unable to conduct business, I would imagine if it's hitting their pocketbook, it will definitely get them moving a little quicker.
Okay, anything else?
I had a question, if I could.
Vice Mayor.
So, the title of this work session is the targeted code enforcement for city entrances and I think that that obviously includes the interstate areas, but hopefully that also includes the downtown. And I think it's smart to focus on those areas because it's almost like a home and its front yard, right? And a lot of people that come through Kingman, they base 100% of their opinion about our community just on what they see in those city entrances. It's like you could have a mansion, a beautiful house, but if the yard is, looks horrible.
Right.
I mean, it's going to take away from the whole thing, right? So, I know that part of this, I've heard several times from many of the business owners downtown, shift to downtown a little bit, that they're not the building owner, they're the tenant. And I don't think anybody can disagree that it's actually the business owners, sometimes the ones that are leasing the space, that are responsible for the resurgence that we've seen downtown. It hasn't just been the building owners, right? Part of our municipal code is the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code, right? And maybe Sylvia can explain kind of all the little components that that covers, but I mean, that would go a long way if you enforced that International Property Maintenance Code downtown. I mean, it covers areas like broken windows, not just weeds, flaking, paint and all sorts of different stuff. Can you just kind of give an overview of all the sections or?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, actually, I didn't bring that with me tonight.
Oh, okay, okay.
And even Rich might even be able to touch it, someone's check with him.
Sure.
Rich.
Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay though, but there's definitely things we're looking at.
It's, if you're trying to create an experience and a center downtown, a retail center or like a little village within our community downtown, then that's a big component of it.
Yep, gives me more direction to look at what areas you'd like targeted also, so definitely, sorry about that.
And I can jump in there real quick with that. We've used the International Property Maintenance Code for enforcement, so it's just, it's one of those issues where it sort of just depends again on that.
So it's just, it's one of those issues where it sort of just depends again on that situation and what you're looking for. But we also have to be careful about going too far into that code criminally because it can get pretty specific. And there are some things we don't necessarily want to look at for criminal charges, more of just sort of that building upkeep that they need to be worried about. But I know, we understand what you're saying, and I know my folks have utilized that in the past, so.
Well, you had to tell me of the legalities. I know that it is incorporated into our municipal code.
Yes.
And obviously, I agree that it's always best to handle things at the lowest possible level.
Right.
I mean, you don't want to go out and charge criminal.
Right.
You know, all over the place. That's not going to help. But I do think it's important to work with the building owners downtown to help the tenants, you know, to make sure that the buildings look nice, that they're safe, that there's no broken windows, stuff like that.
Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, one final thing on this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just one final thing, just on entrances. As we were talking about specifically targeted entrances, appreciate my team's work on getting the area as you come in from Vegas. The other area of interest that I know has been expressed, and I just want to let you know that we've had several additional conversations with ADOT with regards to the interchanges, specifically Stockton Hill, where they've got some dead trees and some of that kind of stuff. We've had really good conversations with them. Jack's working with them. We're going to get some rock. ADOT's going to give us some rock to do some work at that interchange. And we also asked ADOT if they would allow some kind of monument welcome signs at their entrances and perhaps kind of the thank you for visiting monument signs as you leave as part of dressing up those entrances. And so, and we've gotten a positive note on cleanup of those and improvements. And there's, we're currently working on how, when you drive into the community, obviously, not looking at dead trees, but also being welcomed with a, you know, a nice monument sign at all, hopefully all three interchanges and hopefully all six interchanges eventually. But that's work that Jack, and I've talked to Alvin as well, with regards to those cleanup projects, they've been, they've been positive, and we're hoping to have those entrances looking better in the next couple of years, especially Stockton Hill. Because they're just, we have just absolutely ginormous, and that's an official word, ginormous traffic interchanges. They have long lead ramps on and off the freeway, which is just a lot of acreage to have to take care of. But Jack and his team have been on the weed side of it, but we can do better. And so we're going to be working on the monument signs as we work with our, you know, with our new brand that we should have in place in this next fiscal year. That is something that we're definitely going to look to make improvements moving forward. So just wanted to appreciate the focused work, but we are focusing on the other pieces of the entrances as well. So, thank you.
Mayor Miles, if I may ask just two more questions to you, Manager Foggan. The first is, when we're saying targeted in these city entrances and in the downtown, does that mean that you're going to be, your staff's going to be proactive, and it's not going to be complaint-based in those areas, but you're going to go out and be proactive in those areas?
We are always striving to be proactive. There's been, I think, I would say it's a rumor that we're not proactive. As you heard Dave mention, there's cases that are in the hopper that someone starts calling on. They don't realize that we've already been actively involved in notifying the business. And these lead times do cause people to think that we're not being proactive, but that's simply not the case.
Sure. So is there, there's emphasis going to be placed on the city entrances and the downtown?
We will continue, yeah, we will continue to monitor the entrances as a high priority area. Dave?
Yeah, every entrance and exit into the City of Kingman is the targeted area, not just the downtown area. That is, the Stockton Hill exit and In-N-Out exit and anywhere in between. That entrance or targeted area can be different for many different people. They stop at In-N-Out, they stop at Burger King, and what do they see? They see a lot of the ADOT right-of-way that's not being taken care of. We are not complaint-driven. Only half of our calls for service are complaint-driven. The other half are officer-generated. We pride ourselves as being proactive. And as a police officer, I've always been proactive. Our department has always been proactive. So therefore, anybody that represents us, not only the city, but the Kingman Police Department, should also fall under that proactive side, whether it be fire, planning, zoning, or otherwise. Because if we were always reactive, we would never get anything done. We have to be proactive and vigilant in what we see and what we do. Case in point, last year, our officers for the neighborhood services targeted 39 different residences. I drive around every day looking for problem properties, and I make a list of those. And when we have, you know, 15 to 20 of those on that list, I assign them. Some of those I take and others that are assigned. Last year, it was just 39 in a span of a two-day period. So we do have problems, and we're working on those. Not only am I working on it, but those under our command as far as in my office or otherwise, they're getting reported to us daily. My office is the catch-all for everything, whether it be planning, zoning, or fire. And that's why that working group was so important to come to be, because that identified those areas and where they needed to ultimately go so nobody's being shuffled around or lost in the mix.
Dave, thank you. Can we answer your other question?
Yeah, thank you for that. And my last question would be, it does not do with the targeted, but if there were citizens watching right now, and if they have a concern that would fall within this realm, how do they contact the city or initiate the city? Where do they go?
So you can go to the website, or you can directly call the police department, and they will put the person in chat, in touch with Dave and his team to get that. We're rolling out a new report, Report a Concern program that will start Monday, July 8th, which will have press releases on. It's a great new program, and in a drop-down box, you'll more than likely find the exact thing that you need to report. It will go directly to the right person. You don't need to worry that you didn't email the right person or you emailed the wrong department. So all of that is being, has been revamped, and a new system goes into place Monday, July 8th. So thank you for that.
That's great news. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Wow. Thank you so much. I have one final question. The work that we're doing on the ADOT right-of-ways on our, did that take some type of agreement, written agreement, or just verbal discussion with ADOT?
Well, we've had verbal, yeah. We've had an agreement in place for a long time, but we have talked about revamping it to make sure, moving forward, that it's current and covering what we're allowed to do and what ADOT's going to do, that kind of thing. So that, it's been verbal for right now. There's been an agreement in place, but we are looking to re-up on it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Given none, then this work session meeting is adjourned, and we will meet again for the regular meeting at 6:00. In one minute. Don't go far. Okay. Is Pastor Ernst, is Pastor Ernst here? Good evening. Let's get back. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Kingman Common Council. This is our regular meeting. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingenthaler?
Here.
Councilmember Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Waite?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we please stand? And the invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Peter Ernst of Kingman Family Bible Church, and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. Father God, we humbly come before you as the high king of heaven, and we give you thanks for our national liberty and freedom as a people in this great land we call America. Truly, you have shed your grace on us. We stand on the shoulders of countless men and women who have gone before us, paying the ultimate price and giving their lives so that we can enjoy ours. We understand that to whom much is given, much will be required. So forgive those people who seem determined to destroy us from within by taking you from our schoolhouses, our courthouses, and even our White House, and ultimately from the hearts and minds of every God-fearing American still living in this great land. We thank you for this Kingman City Council, for our mayor and city council members, our police and fire departments, and all who still respect the rule of law and the one from whom it came. We look forward to this Thursday celebration on July 4th, our nation's Independence Day, where we can proudly wave our flags, recite our national pledge, and sing our national anthem. We ask for wisdom for these ones who lead us to diligently and with perseverance protect our freedoms and liberties from those who seek to oppress us, indoctrinate us, enslave us, pollute us, and ultimately destroy us as a nation. May true patriots stand without fear against this tyranny and treason. As we proudly wave the colors of the red, white, and blue, we think of the red stripes representing the horror of shed blood, of the dying and maimed as they paid the ultimate price for our country. We think of the white representing the purity and innocence of our unborn and children that run free. We salute the blue field upon which the 50 stars, 50 free states, speak of vigilance, perseverance, and justice. We proudly and without apology stand for freedom and give to you our eternal gratitude for those who paid the ultimate price to win it. For from each generation, blood must be shed to renew our resolve and commitment to our nation's liberties. So we declare once again on this 243rd year of our nation's independence, our Declaration of Dependence upon you. For it is in God we trust, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We pray this prayer in the precious name of Jesus, from whom all liberty comes. Amen.
Counselor Scott Staley, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431038 to 3, to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Our first order of business this evening is a recognition, really, a special recognition of the Mojave County Teenage Republicans Group. This is a new group that has formed. This council has taken the opportunity to recognize many of the clubs and organizations in our community. And since this is new, we've asked for, I think, the leader of this group, Sue Ellen Stewart, to come and give just a few minutes and tell us what this group is about.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor Miles, and good evening, councilwomen and councilmen this evening. I won't take up much of your time, but I did want the city to know that there is a new teenage club in town, and it's called, they have given themselves the name of the Mojave County Teenage Republicans Kingman. I'll give you just a brief, a brief story of them. Leading our nation's youth is one of the most important jobs an American can ever do. This generation holds future congressmen, senators, and presidents. Being a teenage Republican provides an opportunity to hold an impact on elections and learn more about the process that makes the United States of America the greatest nation in the world. Most importantly, teenage Republicans become good, involved citizens who care about good government. And finally, successful teenage Republican clubs never happen by chance. It takes hard work, dedication, and perseverance. One of the most important things is the preparation of future leadership, which is the goal of the Mojave County Teenage Republicans. So if you know of any teens, any teens that are interested in government, ages 13 to 19, please let our teenage Republicans advisor, Jody Scheneman, know, or myself. We welcome all teens. Thank you for giving us this time. And now I'd like for the club advisor to come up and give a few words. Jody?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen and women, and members of the audience. Sue Ellen approached me approximately three months ago and asked me to, if I would be interested in helping out this new organization. And I immediately knew youth that would be good representatives of not only our community, but our nation. I'd like to introduce the members. the members that are present here tonight. We have our chairperson, Hunter Escoffier. If you don't mind stepping forward. And we have our vice chair, Austin Day. And our secretary, Destria Escoffier. We have two other members that are actually working tonight, so they were not able to attend. But we are recruiting, as Sue Ellen stated, four members to join our club, our group. And I'm going to announce that Hunter has chosen to travel to Washington, DC this month to represent Kingman and the Mojave County Teenage Republicans in the delegation that is meeting back in Washington, DC. So he'll experience firsthand how the government is ran.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for sharing that information. Thank you all that are participants in this for your interest in leadership and for what you're doing to become acquainted with the issues that are really relevant in our day and age. So, thank you. Thank you, Sue Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Next order of business is the call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. We do have one person signed up to speak to the council, William McCabe. Please come forth.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
It's been a couple of months since I've been here, a lot there. Just to remind you, my background is I worked for twenty-five years plus as an inspector. I mean, excuse me, as a carpenter, ten years as a superintendent, and ten years as an inspector of school. I brought out some displays passed out. First thing you've seen is a lot of the complaints I found, like doors that still exceed the 2012 IBC bill, because ADA don't address exterior doors, only interior. I've found a few at Home Depot. And these are just places I go for business. There's probably twenty, twenty-five places in town shopping, tires, whatever, that I've found. Which is, oh, about thirty percent of places I go to. I list everything. I gave pictures of the handicap spot is the first one at the hospital. You can see by the pictures, like the third picture is my vehicle, the truck, which is in the handicap spot. I'm cheated over to the line with the guy next to me, can't get in to the door. You flip the next picture, and you can see I only have about eighteen inches to get out of the vehicle in that handicap spot. There's no way a person in a wheelchair could get in or out. I had a tough time. A doctor actually stopped and said, "If I need a hand getting out," I was managed. You know, handicap parking spot's supposed to have an aisle and certain sides that meet. Another one, if you keep going the pictures, is the walkway in front. Has a rail that stops. The sidewalk alongside of it, if you look, second picture, you have a ramp there. And that sidewalk's supposed to be three feet. It's not. You're not supposed to have to go up that ramp. You're supposed to go up the ramp, that's your flat surface, and then travel down. If you go down to the fourth and fifth picture, you'll see gardeners there. They're blocking the walkway. Not supposed to have any blockages in the walkway.
Sir?
Trying to go through them quickly, they don't have much.
You have about thirty seconds.
Next one is a handicap ramp at a medical office. You can see clearly, they have them at the steps handicap rail. And there's two steps there, which is more than six inches. If the ramp's more than six inches, it's supposed to have handicap rails on both sides. It don't. Other picture's right here in City Hall. You don't have the bottom guard rail for the ramp. And you're missing the left handrail coming up. Supposed to have rails on both sides of the steps. You get past the pictures I have there, a lot of it meets Assistant Chief Keith Eaton's presentation. You know, about priority. You go back behind it, it talks about-
Mr. McCabe, we're not going to be able to go through this entire book, but we do have the book. And so I think that this will be kind of a resource that our staff can look at and-
One more specified topic that really needs to be addressed. And that's ADA coordinating. Department of Justice requires each city that has more than fifty employees to designate ADA compliance, a grievance, and a complaint form. We wouldn't be here today if somebody would accept my complaint back when it first started. I was told there was no complaint. Researching, I find the cities should have a person designated as the ADA coordinator, and he should take all the complaints, make sure they're justified complaints, and take action.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that staff has heard you, and we have this resource. So, thank you.
I don't think I got my full time, but-
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next, we'll address the consent agenda. And all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone on the council want to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? No? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Will you approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. There is no old business, and so the new business is public hearing and consideration of Resolution Number 5227 of a conditional use permit to allow automobile sales at 3527 North Esco Street. Lindsay Jo Serrano, applicant, and Fred Widdell, property owner, have requested a conditional use permit to allow automobile sales on property located at 3527 North Esco Street. The subject property is owned one I-1 Light Industry, which allows auto sales by CUP. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this request on June 11th, 2019. The commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the CUP with the conditions as stated in Resolution Number 5227. And staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5227. Mr. Ruggles?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is conditional use permit case CUP 19003. The property owner, as read by the mayor, is Fred Widdell. The applicant is Lindsay Jo Serrano. And this is a request to allow auto sales on a property zoned I-1 Light Industry at 3527 North Esco. Property is about 10,000 square feet in size. There is an existing shop on the property. The land use designation is light industrial. There is a six-inch water line and a 10-inch sewer line that serve the site. They're located in Esco Street. Apparently, there is a driveway to the street. Street is improved adjacent to this site with curved, garbed sidewalk. The east side is not fully improved at this time. Property itself is surrounded by I-1 zoning. You can see this is the aerial shot of the site showing the surrounding uses, primarily industrial and commercial. Posted the site, sent public notices out, or, sorry, surrounding property owner notices out within 150 feet. Public notice was published in the newspaper, and we didn't receive any public comments. And no comments from the, any departments or agencies. Again, the auto sales are required, are allowed by CUP in the I-1 district. The app, this narrative states that the business will be an online auction company focusing on eBay sales. This will include an online auction, which they'll have used cars for sale or auction at different times. They'll have a maximum of five vehicles inside at any time. Three would be stored behind a site structure fence that's already on the property. And also, two would be in the parking area out near the sign that's out there right now. There are no plans to alter the property in any way at this time. This is just a aerial view of the site showing where they plan to have some customer parking and where the cars would be stored and also displayed for sale. With the required findings for CUP, again, the zoning is compatible with the general plan as well as the CUP uses. Both regulations appear to be all in order for this location. This is an area that's a mixture of commercial and industrial uses, so it appears this proposed use would be compatible with the character of the area. Wouldn't generate very much traffic. It doesn't appear. There is no striped parking, however, on the site. So we are recommending that that four paved parking spaces be designated on the site striped. One of those would be an ADA accessible space labeled by nineteen with a five-foot wide accessible aisle. Landscaping and fencing, as I mentioned, there is screening on the site for the storage area, although when they are displayed for sale, autos aren't required to be screened. There is no landscaping on the site currently. However, that would only be required if they were to take out a billing permit that those improvements were over $20,000 in value. It doesn't appear that the proposal would create a nuisance for the site. So the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the CUP with the following conditions: One, that four customer parking spaces would be striped, including one an ADA accessible space. Vehicles displayed for sale would be located on the surfaceing. And that a maximum of five vehicles would be permitted at any one time on the property. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you may have on it.
Are there any questions, Mr. Ruggles? This is a public hearing, and so I would open the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak to this issue, to the council. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Is there anyone that would like to speak on Resolution 5227? I am not hearing or seeing anyone who is interested in speaking on this conditional use permit. And so I will close the public hearing. And I would ask if the council is ready to make a motion on this issue.
Mayor Miles, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 5227.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second to approve Resolution Number 5227. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Eyes have it? Motion carries. Next item of business is department reports. Do we have any? Manager Foggan? No? No. Okay, then we have announcements by mayor, councilmember, city manager. Limited to announcements, board and the commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan? Could you start?
I would just wish you a happy Fourth of July. Invite you to watch the fireworks that we put on. And they are going to be awesome. Also, just as a reminder, the first Friday event will be the fifth. And they're going to have, I think it's a family fun day, fun activities. And they're going to be in a different location this time, down at Metcalf Park. So just, if you're looking for them in the street, they will not be there. They'll be down at the park. So, and then finally, just want to let everybody know that my city manager's Arizona conference, summer conference will be the week of the next council meeting. So I will not be at this council meeting. So, not, not, because I don't want to be here, but committed to going to that conference. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. Counselor Watkins?
I echo our city manager's comments and wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and a safe one in their travels. And that's all I have to say.
I have nothing better.
Nothing to add?
Well, I would like to encourage everyone to show up at Mojave County Fairgrounds because since you decided not to go this year in the dunk tank.
In the dunk tank, I'll go, but not in the dunk-
Tina Nelson is going to go in the dunk tank this year. So, so everyone, please show up at about 4:30 at the exhibit hall. I would love to see all of you. And please have a good and safe weekend.
I was going to talk about the rededication, but were you? Mayor, I'll let you.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, the mayor and Madge Foggan and Councilman Waite and myself, we attended the rededication of the World, it's a mouthful, World War I monument located in front of our historical courthouse. The citizens got together and raised money enough to replace and restore, restore it and replace the machine gun. And it was really special. It was just an amazing event. Over 200 people showed up, according to Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Angus gave an eloquent speech. It was just a really amazing event. I'm glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
You may be mentioning it, but this last Saturday, we held, we held the city council, city commissions joint workshop. Several of our commissioners were there. We also had the new MCC president was in attendance. And, you know, I think it was just a really great opportunity to to kind of talk about what they're going to be all working on this next year. And really just to support them in their volunteer efforts. And, you know, we have a lot of great people that volunteer in our commissions. And, and I thank every single one of them for what they do for us. There's too many issues for seven people to, to look at in the general plan and in all the other sub-plans that we have. So those commissions, you know, they're really, by rolling up their sleeves and their, in their fields and coming with recommendations for the many things that the city is in, it's just invaluable. So, thank you to all of them.
I echo both of your comments. They, they were good, great events, but I also want to thank the city staff for all the work into putting that together. And, because it was, it just was seamless, and it went very well. I also attended the WACOG Executive Committee last Thursday in Parker. Basically, I want, I thank them for their support in their transportation efforts. They have been very supportive of our, our efforts on our interchange development and also our infrastructure in the city. So, that was an opportunity. But for those who don't know, they, they have, we also approved their budgets. And there are a lot of things that go through WACOG that help our citizens and support a lot of good things, including Head Start, early childhood, a lot of utility assistance, many things. And so, it was, it was good to go through those budgets with all of them and know that they're going to be offering those services in the coming year. I also today attended the Water Sustainability Commission. And that was a very informative meeting. It's the county and city working together, our staff, to make recommendations to this council and to the county on water sustainable projects. And I was just pleased that how many sites have been identified as potential basins for recharge or dry wells they talked a lot about. So there's a lot of good things going on. But I also wanted to let you know that what will be coming to council is that we are going to transition this commission, quote unquote, which we established by ordinance to a task force. And that will be coming to us at the next meeting, probably. Because in establishing a commission, we kind of created an untenable situation for them. They're all staff, they all talk all the time about these issues. And so they run afoul, potentially, of open meeting laws unless they- potentially of open meeting laws unless they really, really started to basically agenda and post everything that's going on. So, City Clerk Muley gave us a very knowledgeable explanation of open meeting laws, and afterwards we all said, we've got to change this. So there was great consensus on that, and we'll be moving on. But, but they will be directed to continue the work, continue to work together as a working task force to provide the recommendations and accomplish the same things. So, there was also a great deal of talk about the projects, in particular, specific projects, including the farms that are going in east of our airport. They are called Peacock Nuts LLC, and last week I was able to tour that farm, thanks to Kathy Tackett Hicks, who is letting us know, you know, what they're doing on irrigation and also on this planting of pistachios. The reason I bring it up, one is to thank Kathy for the tour, but also to mention that that was a discussion that this committee today, a great deal of discussion on water sustainability efforts, including many, many recharge basin opportunities. So, there's just positive collaboration at this point that's being indicated in working toward water sustainable solutions, and I thank all the people that were there in our city and also the county representation. And with that, I wish everybody a happy Fourth, and I hope your weekend is full of red, white, and blue, and hot dogs, and whatever you like, and be sure and do go to the fairgrounds and enjoy our fireworks. So, thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Not yet.
Oh, no, I wouldn't. Oh, no, I wouldn't. I'm ready, you see, for the Fourth of July. I even wore the colors. Council requests for future work session agenda items. How could I forget? And/or calendar adjustments. Anything? Okay, counselor.
That would have caught you there.
It would have caught me.
I, I just want to clarify, there will be an item on nine-three about recycling, and can you tell me what that is going to cover in the work session?
Yeah, that will cover all the recycling activities that we have been or currently involved with, and an update on all the costs associated with them as well. So, it will be a thorough...
What I had written down here is I wanted to see the recycling numbers from May and July and August, as well as the costs associated with the new employees that are standing out there. I am receiving a lot of negative feedback from the change.
Got it.
Thank you.
Mayor Miles, I would just have one. Andrew Foggan, when the time is right, there's no rush on this one, but if you could bring a work session item on what it would take to establish a foreign trade zone at our industrial park? Appreciate it.
A lot, but it's a worthy talk. Okay, with that, any others? No? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
First, motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.